It's five thirty. I'll call me and Ram's countrymen's daughter. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move right into the agenda. Approval of the minutes. You have a motion. We have a second.
Second. Did you want to add some stuff?
Just missed a minute.
Thank you. All in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I have two things to add after talking with the state's attorney, if that's okay with everyone. One is just an update and discussion on the opioid lawsuits that were part of it, just so we can have some additional information. And then the other one is the one I talked to you about yesterday, Jeff, approval hopefully of a legal opinion for the North Central Housing Authority from the Ramsay County.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, I have one more thing to add to the amendments, if it's all right, and that would be a discussion on employee leave for the Christmas time period.
Okay.
And so I guess I can second his motion if he'd love to add that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the amended changes.
Okay, second.
Any other additions? If not, motion to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Mr. Philipsen.
Yes. First off, our furnace and our sign ship where we house the Devil's Lake water radiator quit, and we got, I got two proposals, one from Lake Region Sheep Mall to replace it, from Lake Region Sheep Mall for $2,975, and one from Clemmons Roots for $2,525. So I'd just be looking for a motion to accept a low bid.
Move it through, second. Move it, seconded to approve the low bid from Clemmons Roots to replace the heater, the furnace. Any further discussion? Not. All those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved.
Yeah, seconded in there. Silver Construction gave us a bill for the gravel that we hauled into our stockpile in the shopyard there. A thousand yards and the cost was $14,550.
I made the motion to approve paying the bill.
I got a motion and a second to approve paying the bill. Will you pay on this tonight?
Yes.
And roll call, please.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lepon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
And Fritz?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, this is more of a heads up for now. I think I just own the extra money to buy that full load of cutting edges. I don't know if we need to change our original motion, but when we pay the bill, we could just make a new motion. How do we want to handle it? The new amount will be $34,500 for the full load.
What did they give you? Are they already here, Kevin?
Nope, they're not here yet. I told them I wasn't already, so.
Do you have to use the recall?
Uh, no.
Under the original motion, please, can you recall?
Could have been just the motion to order for $17.
Just for the split?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, to approve the purchase of half a semi boat cutting edges.
That's what we did.
Just so you're up to speed, I don't know what's going on.
Never know, like, who knows?
Will that come out of this year's budget? Will they arrive before then?
Yes, it will.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, it's still short. I mean, it's a good deal, though. Able to find money, we should maybe. And the next thing I got is we got a new contract for the engineering on Ramsey County Three, the extra work we'll have to do through Lawton, or not Lawton, Handen. That amount is an additional, $11,727.40 to add to our contract that we have already.
$11,727?
Forty. $11,727.40.
So this is just for the engineering portion of doing all the additional work of having to lay everything out and.
Yep, the additional design work. For handicap.
Yeah, top graphics stuff. We have to do all the GPS work and all that.
Yep. Yeah, for robotic location work, which is for that, we need paper grades. And that's what we need, leading around. And we also had the paving up to the curbs, too, that wasn't, what we figured on doing was just doing the 24-foot, early type of two foot slums all the way through. And then we had the rest of the paving.
Do you have the full dollar amount as a result of that change?
No.
$32,311.
Just wanted to follow up on, do you have any luck with the Russell Street? Any inputs from the other business?
I haven't had a chance to talk to John here, something I got to do yet, but I did talk to the city, and they're willing to throw in like, you know, they could afford like $2,000 as well, so. I mean, that's where we're at there. We don't want to.
No, no.
Like, we can ask them to chip one shit, and then they're not going to have any money anyway, so. Which will discover.
There's some business in the long run. Northbury, you talked to them, right?
I talked.
That's the center.
Yep, correct, correct, Northbury. And I will talk to John here also. But I have a. We have a motion?
Yep.
Yep.
But the motion, we have the chairman sign this, so.
Motion and a second to approve the chairman signing the change order for $11,727.40 for the engineering on Ramsey Three. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the last thing I have is, just for information, more than anything, we put one of those blinking signs up on Ramsey County Two and Four intersection area, the flash twenty-four hours a day. But Richard Frith actually paid for that. He's got some children and grandchildren that travel that road a lot, so he paid for it. It's like almost $1,700 for one of those signs, but he was willing to do that. We'll probably end up, we will end up doing the maintenance on it now, but just so you guys are aware, there's a new, one of those blinky signs there.
Right, I would do.
Uh, counting those two.
Where two is the end of the red lights? Are there any other places that would be beneficial, maybe for us to look into putting those on? Like, maybe on the end of eight, so on both ends there, especially, well, there's township roads on the other side, I guess, but.
We can certainly think about it.
Yeah, I mean, they're expensive. They are, but I mean.
And it's three, huh?
Yeah, where eight hits three on both sides coming from one side or the other way. That'd be beneficial.
There's been a few accidents on this particular intersection. A couple, about one, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And Ramsey One and Fifty-seven out there?
No, Ramsey Two.
No, one dock.
Well, you're saying another spot.
Another spot. Might be, I think everybody's used to stopping out there, but.
That's probably our highest traffic intersection.
Yeah.
That one's lit, though, is huh?
It does have the overhead.
It's got a red light.
Yeah.
They seem to really help.
Well, that's something we talked about, too, about putting the overhead light in with the battery power that solar's up and stuff. Would not be a bad idea, too, if you didn't, maybe you'd license.
How are county intersections with state roads do our lit now? Our lit.
It'd be nice if we could do that on the county intersections, too.
Down there on Highway Two, in the quarry corner, you only have one on the north side and south side.
Now, they are beneficial, because you see it so far ahead that you just, it gets you in the mindset and stuff.
Highway drivers get used to, okay, this is going to be a high-traffic intersection when they see those lights, so.
Yeah.
You save around other places, too. That's a good idea. Don't cost much.
And the states pay for the electricity on those ones. That's the thing, we probably have the electricity bill on this, on the county-county intersection, but I think like the one on, the one and Fifty-seven, we do pay for the electricity there. It's like $11 a month or something.
So what was the request on this latest?
Information, right? Yeah, it's up, no, it's up today, so.
Just in case we drive by there.
Yeah.
Well, good.
Deal, I'll take it.
That's all I have. Anything else for Kevin? Thank you. A few more minutes before the the annual foreclosure sale. Would you have a quick minute for the opioid, since that's probably under cold unfinished business since?
Absolutely. Well, so I gave you all a packet in front of you here. I'm going to try and explain it as best I can in layman's terms. There's a lot of lawsuits going on. I mean, we're talking hundreds, thousands, millions of lawsuits. And if you'll remember a while back, Attorney General Stenjum sued one manufacturer, and that lawsuit got dismissed. Basically, we were left scrambling to make our claims against the other pharma companies when that one went south. So we have claims out. We have some represented through a law firm, some private. It's kind of a mix of both. And what they have done, instead of trying to have 200,000 lawsuits, they picked a cross-section of communities from across the United States. And they're having those lawsuits in Ohio right now. And what this is, the defendants are starting to talk about settling and paying out to all the subdivisions that they possibly bill. They're trying to get an accounting of who they owe, right? So the Attorney General's office wants us to sign up, because the more counties that they get to sign up, the bigger allocation to North Dakota will be. This is separate and distinct from our lawsuits, our claims that we have on our own with our own lawyers. It's my opinion that it's a good idea to sign up for this portal and get our name on the list, basically. I think of it like an insurance policy. If our claims that are going on our own don't pan out, we still might get something. But I want to set the expectation, it's going to be a very small amount based on the number of people asking for money from the lawsuit. Essentially, what they're doing is restructuring their company, and they're going to be giving a certain percentage to the subdivisions that they owe. And then those subdivisions will get a small payout every time the payout happens, so it might be $15, $130, not a lot. They just don't have the assets to possibly cover what they've created. But this is a good opportunity for us to basically put another hat in the ring and say, you know, if North Dakota gets some money, Ramsey County wants some of that money, too. So I would be asking for your approval to sign up for this and monitor it on my end. Any questions?
Move it, second. Then we go ahead and sign up for the North Dakota opioid portal.
Just one question. Do you know when we started this, year or battle?
Years ago.
Yeah.
It's been five years.
Three, four years at least.
I was on the commission when it happened, so it must have been longer than five years.
It's three, four years.
Three or four.
But that portion of it is the one that is still ongoing, because that's Circle Pharma and the other ones. This is simply Janson, Johnson and Johnson and their distributor, well, Janson and Johnson and Johnson and their distributor companies, the Kasten and Cardinal. So there's still additional lawsuits ongoing, but.
Yeah, there's so many companies out there, and then all of their shell companies underneath them, and their manufacturers, and distributors, and Canadian arms, and the long story is, this is going to be playing out for the next 30 years.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Sounds good. I will register tomorrow and do that.
Thank you.
We're on sale time.
Starting the sale. Sorry to catch you up. We'll come back.
Do you need a motion to go into the sale, or is it just that?
We just get that out.
We just see one of the.
We get a change by the bidding.
So we will start off the annual foreclosure sale on the property. And I guess we'll start right up at the top with the parcel in Ontario Township. Would we like to read the parcel number, or we want to just, anybody here to?
Does everybody have a list?
Everybody have a list from up there?
Right by the door.
Okay. We'll read the parcel number for clarity and make sure that Commencing at the northeast corner, the southeast quarter, Minimum sale price is $750. Do we have any bids? Two bids, three bids, four bids? Okay. I don't know if we've ever had the opportunity to increase that.
Oh, yeah.
Bidders? Okay. Anybody else for 800?
I'll go nine.
Nine?
Twelve.
I'll go 2,000.
2,000?
Twenty-five.
3,000.
3,000?
Thirty-five.
4,000.
Forty-two.
Five grand.
5,000?
You can have it.
Anybody else? 5,000 going once? Going twice? Sold. Young man in the back, your name is?
Matt Young.
Matt Young.
Well, it's all like, hope they all sell like that.
And that's what they hope.
Right?
I'm done, no, you don't have to worry.
Okay.
I don't know.
Might buy his other steel yet, everyone.
Yeah.
Quarry, Quarry City. Parcel 38-0302-09394-002, lot one. Block four, block 10, Quarry's West Edition, minimum sale bid of $200. We have a bid of $200? And $200, do we have a competing bid? Anybody? Going once, going twice, three times, sold, $200. Your name, sir?
Matthew Davidson.
Matthew. All right. Thank you. Devils Lake City. Parcel number 39-0000-00012-000. The east fifth of lot.
East five feet?
East five feet of the south 100 feet, lot 16 and 17, lot eight. Yeah. Minimum sale price of $21,000.
It's the green grass next to Anytime Fitness?
Yep.
Where's that at?
It's the green grass next to Anytime Fitness.
Down the road there.
The house that.
No building.
Got, the city tore the house down. That's why it's.
Probably Anytime and Speedall.
Oh.
Any, anyone bidding on that property? Anyone bidding on that property? Anyone bidding on that property? If not, no sale. We'll move on to the next parcel. It's Devil's Lake City. Parcel 39-000-00261-000, lot seven, block 34. Minimum bid of $5,100. Do we have anybody bidding on that property? Anyone bidding on that property? Anyone bidding on that property? No bidders on that property. Edmore City, next item on our list. Parcel number 40-0801-09688-000. Beginning at the southwest corner, then north block 26 and a half. Is that home edition?
Home edition.
All right. $250, minimum sale price. Anybody bidding on that lot?
Yeah. City of Edmore. Sharon Blackestead, obiter.
Okay. Anybody else competing bids? Anybody else going once, going twice, sold? Sharon, thank you. Lotton City, first item up is parcel number 42-0000-10038-001. Lots 16 and 17 of block two. Minimum price of $350. Anybody here for the opening bid, $350 on the first item in Lotton City? Anybody here?
They could do it today, huh?
Yeah, buy the whole city of Lotton, it looks like.
It's not much better.
Any bids on that first Lotton, Lotton City Lotton? No bids? Moving on to the next one.
Same one together, huh?
Yeah. 42-0000-10063-000, lot 13, block five. Anybody here to bid on that? Anybody here to bid on that? Anybody here to bid on that? No bidders. Lot 18, block five? $450, is that right? Anybody here bidding on that? $450 minimum bid? Anybody here bidding on that? Lot 18. No bids on that. Lot 19? Block five, Lotton City. Minimum bid of $450. Anybody here bidding on that? Any bids on lot, was that 19? Lot 19? Any bids? No bids. We'll move on to lot 20, block five. Any bids, lot 20, block five, Lotton City? Any bids? Moving on to lot 21, block five. Same opening bid, $450. Any bids? Any bids on lot 21? No bids. Lot 22, block five. Lot 22, block five, Lotton City. Going once, going twice. Where we at, lot 20, lot 15?
115, lot six.
Lot 15, block six, Lotton City. Same opening bid of $450. Lot 15, block six. Any bids? Lot 15, block six, Lotton City. Any bids? Going once, going twice. Moving on to the next one. Lotton City, lot one, less the west 10 feet of south 160. Block three, east Lotton, minimum bid of $350. Any bids?
I will.
Okay. Any competing bids? Minimum bid was $350. Any competing bids? Going once, going twice, sold, Mr. Davidson. $350? Thank you. Last item on our list is Lotton City. Lot six through 10, block nine, Stoltz's First Edition. Opening minimum bid of $1,900. Any bids? Lotton City, lot six through 10, block 10, Stoltz's First Edition. Going once, going twice. Sold. I mean, not sold. This will complete our foreclosure sale.
We just need a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the results of the foreclosure sale.
Tagged. Moved and seconded to accept the results of the foreclosure sale. Any further discussion?
Just so I remember this right, now, now that this has happened, everything that was on there can be purchased because of the time, right?
Mr. Yaw?
Do we pay now, or after the meeting, or what do we, do we pay, send us a bill, or what?
Um, can you come see me tomorrow?
I think.
Just depends on nature, I guess.
You want to take a?
I can pay it now, whatever you want, you know.
Ten minute break?
We can just let it.
We'll take any ten minute recess. Tell the auditorium back. Call the meeting back later.
Okay.
They'll take care of it?
Yep.
Bo, did you have anything further on the opioid lawsuit? We made the motion, and we decided to go ahead and join the, or sign up for the North Dakota portal?
Yeah. Just, it's going to take time, so anticipate that it'll take a lot of time.
Well, we signed up for that other one, you know, several years ago.
Haven't heard.
Bidders, right?
That, I think that is part of this. The lawsuits that the county is currently seeking is against an entity called Malincrot Pharmaceutical and all of their subsidiary companies, their Canadian companies. This is Johnson, I believe, but they're, go look in your medicine cabinet, any one of those brands. I'm sure there's a lawsuit against Bayer, Pfizer, AstraZeneca.
Right.
And. The reckoning has been more than two decades in coming, so.
Yeah, I don't anticipate that they're ever going to truly put the cost of the problems they've created.
How could they? You'd be talking orders of magnitude more money than they.
They first, how much the county had, you're like, six lawyers? Here.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And they're doing that in every county and city commission across the United States. I'm sure that they have a team that's just dedicated to driving around North Dakota.
They should drive on through. Guys are making their living off of this deal. Guys are making their living off of this deal.
Well, it's.
Oh, they could editing aren't getting a dollar.
As big as the tobacco thing was, and that made several law firms hoo-co-bucks.
Yep, I, I have a feeling that that's, this is gonna follow that kinda same path. And then just so you're aware, we are represented by Schneider Law Firm out of Fargo. I know you contracted with an attorney out of Dallas.
Right.
That Dallas firm hired Schneider in Fargo to kind of be a local counsel and be a local point person, so we don't have to try and get through to them in Dallas all the time.
They weren't actually selling the piece of the action, is probably what they did.
Probably. I've talked to Mac, who's the attorney on the case, and he says, uh, for now, just keep doing what we're doing. When there's news to share, it'll be shared. So.
Very good.
Okay, other unfinished business, the, uh, Art Book Committee. We had Commissioner White on. And our auditor. And was it Commissioner Wakefield?
I don't. No, just me.
Did it just you?
We, we left with the situation of, um, me talking to people to determine who we'd like to put on it.
Right.
Um, I feel like it did do my homework, but I've thought about this a lot. Not that I didn't talk to people, but my question to the commission as a whole is, what are our priorities gonna be with those dollars? Because I think the committee needs to be dependent upon what we deem the priority should be. So if we think we wanna work, spend the money on maybe building upgrades and things like that, then we should focus the committee to work on the building upgrade. You know, the Roger and then maybe, uh, Steve and, you know, cause we're gonna talk, uh, fixing whatever in the building. So we should focus the committee on that. If we're looking at another focus, then we should try to focus the committee with individuals that are more expertise in the area that we want to put into it. My question, the, the only reason I bring this up and saying it is that it doesn't make a lot of sense to me that if we don't have a priority focus from our persi, our position that we're gonna spend it on, I don't know, uh, uh, you know, helping the ambulance service or something like that, for instance, that we have our building management on it. Because well, this would be essentially wasting our time. Whereas, I, in talking with, uh, Chair Frith yesterday, I, I think, at least in my opinion, if we're gonna get our most bang for our buck, we should probably focus on our facilities first and then go out from there with the money that's remaining. And then we can decide what our priorities should be. But I, I really think we should, we should staff the committee based off of what we as a commission think the priority should be. And I, I don't have a problem, again, I, I, but I just wanna, I, I don't wanna appoint people until we know exactly how we feel we wanna do this.
I think it was the next day or two days later after our last meeting, I was listening to the radio or something. Grand Forks County awarded some of the money. And they give some of the essential workers some money. All, who they awarded this money to, I'm not sure. I'm sure we can give a list of how much they gave. Sure, that's public knowledge, so.
Yeah, they came up with some type of, uh, system to determine who was essential and, and then they gave, uh, yeah, a bonus structure. I think that might be beneficial as well.
Get some information like that. There's gotta be other counties that have done the same thing.
I, I'm, I, again, I'm not trying to punt on my duties here, but I just thought about it the whole time, thinking, uh, I, I don't wanna waste our staff's time.
Right.
On something that maybe isn't their area of expertise. And, and, and I think we sit here and go two point one million dollars, but I think it's gonna go a whole heck of a lot quicker than we think it's going to. I, I just saw, and I'm not saying this for instance, but I just saw before we sat down here in the Grand Forks Herald, that they did an ADA upgrade at the Amtrak facility in Grand Forks and it cost two million dollars. So I don't think our two million dollars is gonna go as far as we think it's gonna go, is what I'm saying. I think we could probably, almost in all honesty, find, I'm not saying we spent all of it here, but I'm saying we could probably find two million dollars worth of upgrades to our facilities if we're really true willing.
Well, I, I know that that's true, and I also agree that that's a good place to spend it. Um, I also had the chance to talk to, to Chairman Frith today, uh, and, and my thoughts on it are, um, that we likely should choose, cause you've already got three of, of five. We already know what they are, right? It's two commissioners who are going to represent the commission's priorities to the committee as they sit on it, right? Um, and so I'm not worried about the commission's priorities not being represented on the, on the commission. And then Candy is also on it, so then really you're only discussing about two people. And when, uh, Commissioner Frith and I were talking back and forth, I felt that the two people that would make the most sense to, well, actually, one of them was, was Jeff's idea, so I won't take all the credit. But, but that we use our economic development people. Um, and, and so it would be, uh, Brad Barth and Sandy Shively to, to be the other committee members. And in a way, they're kinda generalists and they're good at doing that kind of cost benefit thinking that, that we've all discussed, or at least I feel is important, uh, to have. And I agree that it'll go very quick, but to me, they would make sense as committee members. Uh, and just to make sure that I had my eyes dotted, t's crossed, I did ask Brad if he was nominated, if he would be willing to sit on this, and he said absolutely. So.
I, I, I do like the concept of somebody that has, you know, that is kinda removed from it, looking at it. That's not, that's not bad. Again, it depends on, on, I'm not saying we have to set the stone on our priorities, but I, I think it's, it's good to take the temperature of everybody on the commission to know that we're at least kind of all on the same train of thought before we start. Cause I guess I look at it this way, if we're gonna do building upgrades, for instance, we're not gonna want a peace dealer. So if we're gonna do a building upgrade and we're saying, okay, we wanna do this and this and this, then we're gonna have to hire somebody to look at what it's gonna cost, instead of just saying, well, we're gonna spend twenty thousand on this and ten thousand on this. You know, if we're gonna do a full upgrade, then we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do and actually do it right. So.
We need to take a plan.
Yeah, I, I mean, we, we wanna be as, as, move as quickly as we can, but be prudent and make sure we make good decisions. Because the, the longer, we don't wanna wait until twenty twenty, the end of twenty twenty-four. But at the same time, we gotta make sure we do it right. Cause our buying powers, you know, with the inflation is going down by the day, with every, you know, until we get the money. But at the same time, if we're gonna do large grade, or large, any kind of large scale building upgrade, it's gonna come, you know, we're gonna have to bring somebody that knows what they're doing to project manage it essentially. Now, I don't know the scope of what we wanna do, but this stuff is rattling around.
I would sure like to see what Grand Forks County did.
They, they gave two thousand dollars to their essential employees. Um, and I think there's, uh, limitations on what we can do, up to, I think it was thirteen, twenty-five an hour additionally, up to a twenty-five thousand dollar max.
Yeah.
Um.
I, I believe in talking with Rondi yesterday, she said Rollout County did a similar thing, except it was a higher number, but I can't remember, it's escaping me. They, they gave us additional.
And it was, not everybody was deemed essential, um, which, I don't know, may hurt somebody's feelings along the way, but.
I'm sure that's gonna happen.
But, you know, uh, what, well, what do you mean I'm not essential? So, you know, there, there's that, but I have no problem doing that either. Um.
But I think, you know, the one, the one thing, and we keep bringing this up and I, I get slightly confused every time, because it's not like this commission is ceding any authority to make decisions if we set up a committee.
Right.
Right? All that the committee will do is go all-in, tabulate and figure out some things that they can bring to us. Right? And if, if, for example, it's decided that the benefits are the highest, if we do a courthouse renovation, for example, right? Then I presume they're gonna have to come to the commission and say, hey, we'd like to hire an architect or, or spend county dollars to get bids on this project, and then we'll come back to you as we sort of work through it. Um, but it's not like we're gonna cede complete control over the thing. So I, so I just wonder why, if we're going to empower a committee, why we don't just empower a committee?
I, I don't disagree with you at all there. My, my point is that it, it, it's only beneficial to the committee to be, to allow them to do their work in a, in a timely manner, that at least they have an idea of what, what the commission's looking for and a focus. Because otherwise, they might bring us an idea of something that we're not looking for at all, and then we wasted everybody's time, that's all.
But on the flip side, and so I, I mentioned this to Jeff, I, if you give too much direction, you might miss out on an idea that came as a bolt from the blue, that is the best thing for the buck that nobody would've thought of. I'm not saying that's likely, but I'm just saying it's, it's one of those things where, to a degree, I still think your two commissioners and Candy sitting on there representing the interests of the county and the courthouse, for example, that's all gonna funnel through anyway. Right? And, and if the committee meets, that will be discussed, I'm sure, during the commission meetings, during portfolios, during whatever, and you're gonna get real-time feedback as we continue to meet.
That's good one.
So I.
Have you talked with, did you visit with Sandy?
That, that was me and she was unavailable.
Okay.
So I had left her a message and I haven't heard back from her. Um. Done, yeah, she was.
Would, would it be reasonable to table this for one more meeting and then we could have those discussions if that's okay, and then, and then maybe seated at the next meeting if that's all right? I just wanna make sure we don't empower a committee with somebody that doesn't wanna be on it.
Yeah, that's probably exciting. Last time, if we throw it out in the air, we'd be the way to ask for it.
One more thing we keep in mind is, let's just say it's a courthouse renovation. Well, other fifty-two counties are gonna do the same courthouse renovat- renovation. That's gonna tie up all those renovation contractors.
Yeah.
As the prices are gonna.
And of course.
So the quicker you can act, I think, the better.
There's no, there's no, there's no question, there's like a million and one business to go as quickly as is prudent, but.
Yeah, we just don't, I, I just don't wanna, like you said, I wanna make sure that we go through a good process and we don't miss out on something that maybe we're not even thinking of that would be a really good use of the money out of the community. But I think it's, I think it's only reasonable to, you know, try to at least look at our needs here first, because it's a one-time opportunity to do it where we don't have to throw the taxes on the back of, you know, of the county and the community. Those things that we probably have to have done anyway.
Right, in terms of projects types, I'm sure that you and I pretty much agree completely on the types of things that need to be done, but I, I guess I'm just disagreeing on the process to a certain extent.
That's reasonable.
You know, it's not, not that I want something different.
The other person along my thought process was, uh, tourism. Susie Kenner was the other person I, she was willing to sit on the committee if, if we so choose as well. Um, we could bring somebody else in from whether it be agricultural, community, water, um, those, along those lines, um, you know, we could go all over the gamut if we'd like, but, um, yeah, I think, I think sooner the better is always a good thing. I think, um, getting that committee together and, and seated would be a start. I still think that there's questions that are gonna arise that how can this money be, be properly spent? And I think we really have to make sure that our eyes are dotted, our t's are crossed, that it falls within the guidelines set forth by the Department of Treasury, and that list hasn't been finalized yet. But, um, we don't wanna screw that part up and, and have to pay that money back.
No, we don't wanna do that.
No, no, we have to make sure we do that, right? Well, that's, and that's why I think it's prudent that we go through the processes reasonable, so we can. Candy can then talk to the experts and double check and make sure we're doing things correctly.
We haven't phoned experts yet, um.
I've sent emails.
I thought that, I thought you were gonna try to come, or.
Yeah.
Not get back, well, she's probably got ten thousand people trying to get on.
Yeah.
You sent emails to who?
There, there was a gal at the, um.
Oh, that, would lead us through that?
Like convention.
Oh.
That she was like, she was crisp, like she.
She was from the National Association.
Yeah. She, she could answer almost anybody's question of doing different things. And she knew everything just off the top of her head. And I've, I've sent a couple of different emails, but I mean, I'm sure, you know, you got fifty-three counties and, you know.
The whole United States.
Yeah, like how many other are, you know, sending emails?
Yeah, she's probably got thousands of people flooding in your box asking for help.
Yeah, yeah.
Is the Association of Healthies thinking maybe in the state that maybe they would have a point person that maybe would help them?
Our associate, like the Auditors Association, um, we have discussed about like having a point person.
Yeah. I think that's reasonable.
Are they out there? Is that type of person there? Nobody can answer that question.
I don't know if the association's got that person either. It's just, I mean, every county in the state is getting money and a decent amount of money. It only makes sense that we should have somebody that we can make sure we can just bounce stuff off of.
Yeah, the auditor's responsible for it.
Yeah. We don't want you to go to jail, Candy.
No.
Not for two million dollars.
I think, if you get this right, that's all ours to do, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I agree. I think that in my mind, and maybe, maybe I failed to understand exactly what everybody else is imagining from a committee, but that this committee would coalesce the various asks and, and, and to include input from as many segments of the community as want to be engaged, right? So if, if, if there's something relating to.
Alert. Oh.
No, I just hit my watch.
If something related to agriculture is important, or water, or whatever, just because there's not someone on that committee doesn't mean that I don't think any value over here. And then at that point, you could, once you've gotten this list of, of the different asks, you'd start by saying, which of these is a legal use of the money, right? Then which of these is likely to have the highest and best outcomes? And then you take that and you bring that to the county commission, who then looks at the list of the things that, you know, we know now are legal to use the money on, and we see in, you know, in what way they're ranked by the committee, maybe with some final thoughts on why they're ranked that way, and then we can make a decision.
Did that's, did you, did you say Susie would be willing to?
She would. Sean?
Is, who's the, is this out of FEMA or who's this from?
Uh, American.
US Treasury.
This is from US, but it's not out of FEMA.
No.
Okay.
Uh, whatsoever, I think.
No.
I'll, I'll be with them tomorrow, so I was just wondering if I, if I can ask a question while I have one-on-one.
Yeah.
But, sorry.
Yeah, I think it would be beneficial to have somebody like from tourism, you know? I mean, cause there might be some uses out there that we could use it on, you know, whether it's like preservation or additional access points or something like that, it might be. Plus, you know, we've, I've Susie had committees before and she's been really good to work with, obviously really good input.
Well, it's very interesting to me, when Grand Forks County is appetizing, or not appetizing, but telling the media what they've done with some of them. And I think we gotta feed off other counties and what they're doing. And if they're doing it, then evidently it must be legal, we hold, but we gotta find out for ourselves too. So we've gotta be careful, you know? Small, I think. You know? Yeah, we might miss out on a, a good deal on what renovations we wanna make to the courthouse, but, um, we gotta make sure it's right. And, and the people of the county are in support of it.
This probably goes without saying, but I just wanna remind everybody, no promises of, oh, yeah, we'll get you on the list or anything like that.
Yeah.
Cause then we can get into a lot of problems on, well, you promised us funding to our township roads and now we, you know.
Well, that, and that's one, that's one of the main reasons why I think it's appropriate to not have it be in those bodies, that promises like that, you know, cannot be made in any capacity whatsoever. Um, just to, to you, Commissioner Brown, because I wanna make sure I understand, about going slow, do you feel that empowering the committee to begin looking at what the different asks are is going too fast? Or are you just talking about spending the money itself? Cause those are two different things in my mind.
Well, we need to have ideas and what to spend it on to see if it is legal. And if it is, all right, yes, we need some ideas. I agree with you there. But what directions are we going, you know? I'd like to know what else Grand Forks County did, other than give some essential workers a bonus, basically, is what it did. Cause they all got their paycheck.
Yeah.
You know, and if J O was involved in Grand Forks County and getting essential pay.
Yeah. Well, and I think stuff like the law enforcement center, you know, in terms of maybe facility upgrades or something, if that qualifies, might be a beneficial use of some of the dollars too, but it's, it's all things that we need to look at.
Right, right.
I think a lot of theirs went towards the water treatment plant in Grand Forks.
Yeah, they're gonna spend a bunch on the water, yeah, they're gonna spend a bunch on the water. The city also was receiving some, I believe, and they spent a bunch on water treatment because of the possibility of that large plant coming.
I don't think we have any problem getting that information from them or the county, whatever other counties that are maybe some decisions on what they're doing, then we can look at that. And the committee can look at it first, give us their recommendations, let us look at the other counties and what they've been.
That's, well, that, that would be a job of the, of the, of the committee once it's empowered to pull those other counties and put it together and kind of give some ideas to the commission. Well, we've discussed a lot, so.
Yeah.
Is it okay if I make the motion that, uh, I would, I would make the motion to finish filling the committee? I'm already on it, so myself, Suzie Kenner, Brad Barth, and if it's okay with Commissioner Wakefield. He seems very interested in Commissioner Wakefield on it as well.
No, I'm sure I can't second, so.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I just wanted to move along.
Just so we all.
I think we're all on the same page.
All foreign, rich information and.
Right.
So let's see what other counties are gonna do, you know, how, maybe they're not setting up a committee, maybe they're setting up a twelve-person committee. I don't know, but find out what everybody else is doing, let's try to learn from that.
I, I think if I read what Cavalier did is they set up a committee of their commission and then a couple of their smaller communities within Cavalier County. So everybody's doing it a little different.
I'm watching their page, everybody else.
Oh, Candy as well, sorry, Candy as well.
Well, unless you want your name to be signed, then.
You and I, you and I were already appointed at the last meeting, so you're not out yet, no. In addition to Candy, I think so.
Okay.
I, I think it's just a good cross-section. Brad's with the business community, Suzie's on the tourism. We got a commission presence, we got our numbers expert and I got a little vague stuff going on, so. So it's a good mix.
Good mix. Further discussion? You're okay with the sitting on that committee?
It's fine with the commission, it's fine.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now, just as an open meeting, open records reminder that that committee would have to follow all those guidelines as well since it's a committee appointed by the commission.
Yeah.
I'd also like to clarify, that committee does not have spending power.
Right.
So.
You mean, they can't buy gold?
No, it's just like any other committee, you have to bring your recommendations back to the board to.
It's not, it's not, it's not the home rule committee, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we don't need any spending.
Well, well, I guess we budgeted the home rule, but still, it wasn't like the home rule committee who's gotta sign checks on whatever.
Right.
So, okay.
Perfect.
Perfect. Thank you very much for agreeing to commit to that and we look forward to your next report every two weeks.
America doesn't think we will.
I'm just kidding. But maybe at our, our December seventh meeting, we can have a timeline of where you guys, when, when you guys would like to meet and how often you'd like to report and.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll have to get a preliminary meeting together and sort of set expectations and talk about what the best way to figure out how to do what we've been empowered to do and then we'll be able to report that back.
Perfect. How about if I send a group email?
I'd be like that, Candy.
Wonderful.
As always.
Thank you.
Is everybody gonna use the hundred and fifty-one page interim final?
Hundred, hundred and fifty-one, times four hundred and fifty.
Well, that's interim final rule.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure that, yeah, that's.
I'll get started, I'll get started in the nightfall.
You guys are both three babies or something.
And then you fellows.
Yeah. Any other, new business site authorization?
Sorry.
Moved and approved, approved the site authorization for the discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
They're just having to fill out anyone because of new ownership.
Sure.
It's all written for that.
Those for it's.
Yep.
Review the letters we received from the city of Devils Lake. This stems back from discussions and we sent a letter to them. They then turned someone back to us. Do we wanna digest it, act on it? Do we just wanna review it?
Well, I think we gotta involve Rob Johnson, the old guy.
Yeah.
See what he wants to do, I visited with him today. He's already just putting it off for a while and I don't see any need to have him right now.
Okay.
We've got enough thing going on to get out, so.
Yeah. Okay, we'll let him know that we will take it under consideration. We send the burn ban, this is a formality, should've been done, uh.
Second.
Yeah.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we rescind the burn ban that's been in place for quite some time.
Question just really quick, and maybe I failed to understand when we first put it on, but I thought the reason we tied it to the, the fire stages was because that way you wouldn't have to constantly be putting on and taking it off.
Right.
Doesn't, doesn't it sort of take care of itself? I mean.
Hypothetically, it should, but.
I mean, it's fine with me to repeal it, I just thought that was part of the reason we switched it.
I, I think it's. I think it's reasonable to empower it every spring and then rescind it every fall, but because when we do it, then it gets put out that we've put it back on again and that this is obviously, you know, it's just a healthy reminder, I guess, I don't have a problem with rescinding it.
No, and I'm not claiming that I do either, I just felt like when I saw that we were rescinding it, I thought, well, gosh, I thought the reason we put it, attached it to this was so that it was not a.
Well, there was, there was no end date to it and there was, you know, it did go by the burn levels or the fire index levels within the state categories. I think it's something that a lot of counties have done throughout the state is they either had an end date to it, it was gonna end at a certain date, or they had a, you know, something that their emergency management brought into their county commission to rescind.
No, that, that's, that's fine. I just wanted, just to clarify that, that, that's totally fine, so I'm, I'm.
So we have a motion and a second to rescind the burn ban. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Holiday schedule for the courthouse. I think it was on the news and it was quite the buzz within the building today that the city had given, decided to give their employees the Thursday before, which would be, so Christmas falls on a Saturday, Christmas Eve is Friday. And what the city had done is decided to close all day Friday, Christmas Eve, and give their employees half day off on Thursday, the twenty-third. Whether or not we wanna follow suit or I thought it'd be a good idea to, to follow discussion. So I asked Commissioner Wakefield to go ahead and, and go ahead and put that on our agenda. I guess in recognition of how hard our employees work and the dedication that they have, I think, you know, even a full day on Thursday, the twenty-third would be okay.
Does he give it a half?
Does he give it a half?
Yeah, just, just out of curiosity, what's our normal policy on it? Do we give, always give full Christmas Eve off?
No, usually it's a half day, but since Christmas itself is.
But they always get Christmas full day off and then a half day on Christmas Eve.
Right.
Candy, do you know what basis they're about to? People come pay taxes and I know at the end of the year, they're gonna pay it for Christmas or not, generally.
It's the in-between.
It's in-between?
Yeah.
And, and generally, what you see is, is people take that full day, if they're going out of town, doing, traveling, have kids at home, different things like that. Sometimes that half day isn't the most productive of days, but and that's why I guess I thought maybe a full day would be, give a little extra to our all-day employees. You know, in recognition of the hard work that they do on a daily basis and a little bit of our appreciation. But I'm open for.
Well, at the very least, at the very least, they need, we need to give them half day because they're getting short of that essentially because of Christmas going to Saturday.
Right.
Same thing as you said, you just leave it all. A lot of it. Were you that candy, your question?
Like, like Jeff said, that, you know, that half day, people, you, you're, you're gonna be a skeleton crew anyway.
We take that off.
Yeah, you know, cause there are ones that'll just take the four hours and, you know, leave one or two people.
I'll make the motion that we give all the employees a full day off on the twenty-third.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded that we give all employees the shoot.
Deal is the twenty-fourth also, I mean, it.
That's, that's it.
That was already part of it.
That's already, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Christmas observed, right.
Christmas observed.
Yep.
Is the twenty-fourth. Sean?
That's already got that off, right?
Yeah.
About way to that, please.
Okay. Moved and seconded, did any further discussion? Kevin, you okay with that? It wasn't, unless it, unless it's snowing, right?
Yeah, she is right, though, they take the half day vacation.
Right, yeah.
So we're basically like people say, we're vacationing.
That's fine.
It, it's.
We'll just use them a different day.
Okay, so, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Buildings close on twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, we, we're gonna do a Christmas party, right?
Seventeenth of, of December.
Yes.
Uh, Friday before.
Yes.
Commissioner breakfast, Commissioner and department heads.
Right, and we, we agreed to that. And who, who is gonna help with that? Was that us? You and I?
I don't know who's in charge, but I'm cooking, so.
So, so.
Let's talk, let's talk to the committee and make sure we know that we're, that's only a month away.
I told Candy we need a party planning committee here out here, so.
For the committee to plan parties, committee to be in charge of the office.
I think we still have one thing under, unfinished.
Well, Sean, do you have, did you have anything?
Nope.
You wanted a.
New business, excuse me.
Unfinished, new business or new business?
Yeah, it's just the one thing I put on legal opinion for the, for North Central Housing Authority, I say it wrong. I'll explain a little bit of what we're looking for here, as quickly as I possibly can. In, uh, North Central Housing Authority has administered programs, Section Eight as well as public housing for Town or County Housing Authority for a number of years, as well as Section Eight for Riggs, Nelson, I believe, Cavalier and, and Ramsey. HUD is saying that we need to have a new contract with Town or County because they wanna re-up every five years. Previously, it was just we put a contract in place, we gave it to HUD, it was no problem. Now they're saying we need a legal opinion that the county or North Central Housing Authority has the right to enter into that contract. I ran it past both. Basically, what they're saying is, and, and they, HUD won't give up, won't give us any information as to what we're supposed to have, where this legal opinion's supposed to come from. And our executive director, Tim, and myself sat down and visited about it. I, I, we figured the best thing for a legal opinion to come from is since the county seats the members of the, uh, that board and appoints them, that the county is basically then saying we're okay with that board entering the contract. So we're giving the right for that board to then enter into those outside contracts. It's all under North, North Dakota entry code, but for some reason HUD is saying we need this legal opinion now, which it never needed in the past. So that's why, what you have in front of you is what you have.
I'm gonna piggyback on it, so that's step one, is getting the commission to approve it. Then step two is I'll basically write a letter saying, I believe the commission acted lawfully when they did this. I am gonna put a fly in the soup though. If that's what you wanna do, given the commit, that committee, more or less, the authority to make decisions, that flies in the face of what we were just talking about with the ARPA committee. So.
Flies in the face, how so?
Cause if you're giving them, your appointed representatives, the ability to make decisions and you're not giving the ARPA committee the ability to make decisions, that creates problems.
Does it?
Well, how so? I mean, we have all kinds of committees that are outside committees that we appoint commissioners to that make decisions. I mean, whether it's the law enforcement center, whether it's the social services or.
It'd be, it'd be a carve-out specifically giving certain powers to a certain committee, but not empowering every committee to make every decision, right, I think?
Just for your information, that, I mean, that's how it can appear.
And, and I'm not saying that HUD is going to be satisfied by this, we're not gonna know until we give it to them, but they won't give, Tim has been pounding them to say, do you have a format for this? Do you have a base letter, this is what you're looking for from whom? And they just won't give them any information, so he said, well, the best we can come up with is the county seats the members on that board. So essentially that board is acting on behalf of the county. So let's have a legal opinion since the county's fine with us entering into a contract with Town or County because we've done it for years. And Town or County's commission is gonna have to do the same thing in saying that Town or County can enter the contract.
Well, is, so is there a way to word this that we're more specific than, you know, following that legal line of argument, just so that we don't end up with this problem? Is there a way to make it specific to this committee to have this power? Instead of just being the fact that we seat them, it's, we seat them for this task and therefore they have the power. You know what I mean?
So, as I understand it, there's not a lot of funding that goes through what was formerly Ramsey County Housing Authority. None, none from the commission.
Not from the county.
Everything's done federally, so what you are doing is not giving them the ability to spend, but the ability to.
Allocate.
Service the contracts that need to be serviced. You can sign off on this, but you can't go, you know, obligating the county for millions of dollars.
Well, and that's why I, I looked at this from the aspect of, I didn't think it's any huge deal simply because there's no dollars following it. It's just saying that.
They can make.
We empower that, yeah, that decision-making process to that commission, essentially.
And I reviewed this memorandum for Adam, I think it's sufficient to.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion, just for the chair to sign it.
No, no. Sorry.
Hey.
We have motion and a second for the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding for North Central Housing Authority. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I will have Tim stop over whenever we get all the paperwork done for you to sign.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else under new business? I don't think so. Visitors and delegations. Sean, you've been more than, more than patient.
Just listening.
Well, thank you for coming. Sorry I missed your award ceremony today.
There was quite a few people, I apologize for the late invite for everybody, but they're all from out of town. This is the only day they could all be here, so.
And refresh the commissioners on what that was, it was a.
It was five civilians pulled somebody out of a burning vehicle, they were on, the person was actually on fire. And they pulled them out and extinguished them before anybody arrived and the guy's still alive today. It's a local resident that's still alive. So the, we gave them as all first responders in the community, the six agencies, gave them all the civilian lifesaving award. And the North Dakota High Patrol gave the Colonel's coin and the governor's award for lifesaving. They'll be on, they'll be on the news tonight, I think Fargo was down there and Eric Arnt was there and there were a few others. It was a lot bigger than we thought. We had only planned for a little bit, had to run to Levers real quick and buy some more appetizers and some juice boxes.
That's a good problem to have, though.
Yeah, it was. We, we went from the conference room to our garage, moved all around, Avalos was out, so.
I saw her on Facebook, so.
Oh, good. Thank you, appreciate that and appreciate the lifesaving efforts of our local citizens. So, who knows to them, thank you. Uh, announcements, and meeting tomorrow, aquatic, aquatic invasive species, uh, information on prevention, uh, meeting tomorrow evening at the, I think we'll stick with the Armory tomorrow. I think, uh, I've asked Mr. Mo, our GIS individual, to help us stream that on the Ramsey Conys, uh, YouTube channel, uh, get the information out there as, to as many people as possible on the prevention of bringing, introducing aquatic nuisance, invasive species into our waters here in North Dakota, uh, especially the importance that recreation, fishing, tourism has to the lake region.
Who's speaking?
Uh, Ben Holen from North Dakota, uh, Game and Fish, he's the ANS coordinator, um, he will be there along with one of his assistants to, uh, give a presentation and answer any questions. Um, this is something that Rich Brechner, North Dakota Sports Fishing Congress, and member of the state ANS committee, has addressed the commission about several times, and, um, we were hoping to get, uh, maybe the director of Game and Fish up, but there was a conflict in his schedule, so we'll have to address that at a, at another time down the road. But hoping to get as many people there publicly as possible, um, commissioners, uh, we sent out invitations to our local legislative, uh, delegation, District fifteen guys. Uh, we've sent it out to media, we've sent it out to the Angler Association, uh, Tourism Chamber sent it out to their mailing list, so hopefully we're looking forward to a big crowd. Uh, it's a big, big deal and something that Game and Fish can't handle on their own, um, it's going to take a lot of individual effort to, um, combat aquatic invasive species into our bodies of water, so. Asking everybody to please attend and bring a friend, so, tomorrow evening. We've had this discussion several times before, so I won't go into a lot of the detail, but if you can, great, if not, send somebody that you, you know, would be interested in. Whether you, uh, live or recreate on the lake, or whether you turn on a light switch in your home, uh, everybody's affected by introduction to aquatic nuisance species. So, um, spread the word. Anything else for announcements?
Are you going to finish this document on employee breakfast?
Employee breakfast, um, Commissioner Wakefield, do we want to cater that in, or do we want to?
Do it, it's more fun to cook it, I mean, I'd say, I, I think we've had a good reception, I mean, we're, they're cooking, if Commissioner Wakefield's willing to do it, I can, I can make some mean eggs.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we could have some scrambled eggs, and we could have some egg, and we could have some sausage, and.
Yeah, um, maybe pancakes.
Maybe some pancakes.
Yeah, I think that'll be just fine.
We'll do some.
Yeah, I, I, well, here's my plan, then, um.
Is that, is that some sausage okay with you guys?
Do you have some?
Yeah.
And pretty soon, yeah, contribute that, and that would be great, um, what I will do is, I will go to a store probably the day or two before and pick up what I think we need. And I'll plug that and make sure we're not doubling up and whatever, but if you would contribute that as a sausage, that would be great.
Yeah.
Um, and then I'll just plan to be there early on in the morning, and we'll figure out what we need to cook down there.
Well, not early, we did this on.
Well, I talked to, uh, HR Director Brian Singer about spreading the word, uh, getting department heads involved, and if they can, department heads will be willing to maybe, to help, uh, prepare, serve.
Absolutely, we'll take all that we can get.
So.
I would set it up for eight.
Do we want to do that at eight, do we want to start at seven-thirty, or we want to, um.
I think you previously said get served by seven-thirty, so that way if people want to.
Come in early.
Come in early before they get to third day, if you do that too.
Totally fine. That's totally fine.
And you also have to put into factor that it's winter.
Well, well, I mean, I, I, I think I'm willing to be there as early or as long as it takes.
I think made to start preparing it should be like seven-thirty.
Well, maybe like seven, I think probably we might be here and start preparing about half an hour early, just make sure you got enough made.
Yeah, don't worry, I'll come there at five, if you keep.
There's a, there's a.
Well, there's stove tops, there's ovens, um.
Could you drill outside that?
And if you want, uh, electric, electric frying pans or something like that, you're gonna have to bring your own, so.
We'll, we'll, we'll get it figured, the logistics of that I don't have to worry about, but.
Logistically, we can figure it out.
And, and I don't know if the.
Smoke closet.
Uh.
Very good.
None of that skunky gear in there.
I don't know.
The label is.
Real food. I don't know.
We're having a lot of fresh eggs over here, girl.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll get together as a commission and, uh, department heads and, and, uh, we'll, uh, figure out the logistics of Friday, the seventeenth. For employee appreciation breakfast, and.
It's time to eat until eight o'clock, you don't have to wait.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah.
Food's ready.
And, and what else we want to serve besides eggs and, and sausage.
Well, well, yeah, we, I think we can have that discussion in a less formal way, since we're not, not actually spending the county's money on.
Plus something over your legs, like musk mellers.
Yeah, so.
Dave, uh, I don't know if we're doing portfolios or anything, but I just wanted to announce that at the last district health meeting, uh, Al McKay tendered his retirement notification.
Great for you.
So, uh, I think he's due to retire in February, he gave us a long lead on, I think it was something like February, I'd have to find the letter again, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that. In the near future, district health will be looking for a new commissioner.
Well. Sorry to hear that, but well-deserved retirement, so, yeah. Anybody else? If not, uh, adjourned at seven oh five PM.